But that means we're going.
I'll call this, uh, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting to order Angela.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Eddie?
That was me, you're not Eddie.
All right.
You don't have to forget.
I'll make a motion to approve the real property exonerations.
Second, home favor.
I'll move to approve the the combined lots which are owned by the same people.
Second.
Home favor. I cannot write topics and, uh, not.
I'll move to approve payroll Alsber April fifth and nineteenth.
Second.
Home favor.
We have some.
Ruth, anything come up to you?
Would you like to sign that again?
Anything come up that you, uh, questions?
I forgot my notes from the last meeting in my box. There was something on the. Hold on. I don't think we've printed all of them because of the. Well, I think we need to stand down on one of these reimbursements until we can get one of them because I'm not sure if some of these expenses are ones that we can cover under the fire levy. Maybe we can go into executive session in a little bit when it makes sense to, because our volume's online.
Okay.
Call him and ask him and then maybe we can get it through, but.
Okay. She will hold, hold off on the, uh, fire. Yes, I don't mind. If you want to prove the rest of them.
Well, we just do them all at once.
Okay, that'd be fine. Okay.
All right, I'll motion to approve the AM and PM minutes for March the thirteenth.
Second, home favor.
Aye.
Estate settlements.
Make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second.
Home favor.
There's also a fiduciary position.
That falls under commission.
Michelle has a lot of this.
Well, this is up to a point, oh, approving his finding. Michelle, you, you said you have some information about this.
Yeah, um, basically there was questions because there were someone who was precinct in the will. Um, there was some question about how the real estate interest should be divided. Uh, some of the years thought that the map should go one way and the air thought match should go the other way. So we sent it to, to you. The very last page of his finding is what, the last two pages are from. Where he showed in the will what he read and the same thing that we read, Lisa and I came to say. And then that was probably.
This is the family that.
All right, I'm moved that we, uh, accept the recommendations of the fiduciary commissioner in the estate of Thomas Wallace Wendell, Jr.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
Well, we all have to sign those.
All right. Budget. Ruth?
Your budget is done.
Yes.
With, I think, everything y'all collected. So it allowed for you to give everybody the two thousand dollars across the board. We moved some of like materials and supplies over to Cole Severance, part of the shares department, since we want to have new six companies. And white picket, like a good, the sheriff picked a good combination of the highest cost, lowest cost to average it out, so.
Then the plan is to try to take six off every year until the levy cycle is completed.
Yes.
The next four years, take six off a year.
So basically y'all have to sign every tab on there and Michelle has to sign a couple too.
She was real shows.
Forgot to ever say.
We tried to put big green tape over the one seat, won't sign in her spot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because it's a lot.
Big green tape that says Michelle.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's clever too, because now I wouldn't.
I'm interested in her.
Wait, are there's the sign here? Okay, no.
Yeah, y'all are the sign here. So all three commissioners have to sign every one of those sheets.
Can we approve it and just sign it?
Yeah, yeah, because if not, you will be there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Let's do that if you don't mind.
I don't mind. Um, if you want to give these to Michelle, it looks like all of these are hers.
Okay, and then I have the fire budgets probably for y'all.
And I.
Go ahead.
I, I was wanting to mention this, since Fedville came in on how the two commissioners fell, since Fedville come in and requested us to try to approve theirs prior to or with our budget, I was wanting to see if it's okay if we approved Fedville's, uh, requested budget.
Well, I think it would be optimal to do them all at the same time. I realize we gave them short notice this year about, uh, the deadline, so I do wanna, I do think it's a good idea to go ahead and.
And they requested that.
Yes.
Yeah, they have, they have to do the same budget.
And they presented and, and I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, we, we should have had all of them in presenting to be honest with you, but we give them time.
Well, there's only.
Next year.
A lot of them.
Next year we should do them all at once and, and, you know.
Along with our budget.
Yeah, along with our budget.
I think it's the only way we should have been doing it anyway.
Since the agenda says budget, we could go ahead and put the fire one underneath it. There would be no issues.
It just says, but it's, it's generic. So you're, that's your general counting, your coal severance budget, and that would be, um, a fire budget, however y'all want to word it. And then we also have some other funding requests y'all might want to consider. They're not included in the budget request. But there's stuff that comes up before like that June, July, and there's smaller expenses I may call, if y'all want to look at those and maybe put them on a meeting in April.
Okay. Go ahead. Move to. I'm making a motion to approve Fedville's fire budget. Home favor.
Aye.
Did you approve General County and Coal Severance?
Not yet. Should have done that first, but.
That's okay.
General County. Say it again, Ruth.
General County and Coal Severance.
General County and Coal Severance budget.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
I've done this for four years. I should know that.
Well, I wanna, I wanna recognize Ruth for all the hard work and Gia that they have put into this budget because it is a nightmare and they did it at the time that the auditor was here, which is a double nightmare. And, you know, we're getting emails from her at five AM because she's working on all of this stuff um, all day long and has to do her other work at five AM and on weekends. So, um, thank you.
She always does well and puts up with me.
And after that, with Tom.
Well, that, I mean, for that one. There's no way to, there's no way to compensate you for that. There's no way to compensate.
All right, Ruth.
All right, um, you all need to sign this. Let me do the extension on.
Oh, yeah.
Too. So this is part of their pretty budget that goes back to W B U. It's just Tom saying. We'll probably miss a couple signatures, but we'll, you know.
Catch them.
We always do.
I guess it really is Michelle, isn't it?
What are the first thing? Election official lists? Do you want to show me?
Yeah, that's me. You kind of put my green paper inside my name. Well, that whole first half was Michelle. I think you guys.
Yeah, and it's the song stuff that's published. So, uh, we, we have a better list than we did a week ago. Um, we're up to a hundred and, I think we're like a hundred, almost a hundred and seventy, a hundred and sixty some. We added, there's four people we added since I gave this list to over, put your packet.
Yeah.
Um, so we're getting there. Most, for the most part, the only issue at this point right now is there's a couple precincts that are down that I would, would need someone in. Um, the valley is very low for people. Like we right now only have three people confirmed for Montgomery, for the city of Montgomery. So, you know, we need at least one more. But most of these precincts could, could work with the four people they have in them. Uh, my only concern is we have absolutely no offense. So if someone gets the flu the day before the election. Um, I think in the primary, we had a lady that went into early labor.
Well, then we had a whole family that didn't show up, right?
Yeah, yeah, I told that too. But yeah, there's stuff that legitimately can happen that, you know, people aren't able to, as they said they're going to. So.
And at what point can you not appoint them at any point?
I mean, we can keep, at this point, when this list is approved and we've gone through the executive committee lists, it's up to the office to appoint. And we can appoint people up until, we'll have a class sometime the week before the election. So as long as they can come in and get training, we're good. Um, we would like to have more notice than that, but that's helpful. Um, the only other thing that I really need, and we will need to do maybe next meeting, because I did not put David Bennett. We, we have a Republican emergency absentee ballot commissioner. David Bennett, he's done several years. I'm sure he is willing to serve again. He's never called you that. We do not have a Democrat. Um, no one was nominated. The, the person that they nominated last time did not show and called them, so. We need, we need a Democrat or nonpartisan. That can be nonpartisan, the opposite party for that particular.
What is it?
The emergency absentee, so they have to be available on election day to go to the hospital or go to somebody's home or go to the nursing home.
Remember there was controversy.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, if you, I just figured you should allow the rate, so, because not everybody knows, so I thought maybe. Yeah, so what that is, is if someone has to request an emergency absentee ballot meeting, they didn't request one during the regular point, then they got too sick to go to polls, they can request one of those. And that is, um, and then those two commissioners go to them, to the hospital, to their, their house, if they're homebound, or to the nursing home, and can do their administer their ballot to them. And so they have to be opposite party because you have to have opposite party people, everything. Those people get paid, uh, seventy-five dollars if they get called out and then plus mileage. So they get seventy-five dollars for the election day and then whatever their mileage is to, from courthouse to wherever they have to go.
How often?
On the next agenda. We can't. Yeah, we probably should, um, because I didn't put David on this list. Probably didn't have a Democrat.
How often do they actually go in?
What we try to do, what they typically do is, we've had one each time we've had an election. We had one in primary and we had several in the generals. This last time a hospital had about three. We try to make it one trip or like make it all one thing. So wait until they have to have that application in by noon on election day. So at noon, these two people would come to the, or maybe a little before would come here, get the addresses of, and people who would they have to get seen and then go through those trips. Sometimes it's two or three. I think in the general, they had to go to someone's home and then they had to go to the hospital.
So, so right now you just need us to approve the ballots for, uh, coworkers?
Yeah, the election.
Okay, so I move that we approve the list.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
And then the, also move that we approve the Republican ballot commissioner, the, the absentee ballot commissioner.
I know why they use the same terms.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
So we'll just have the Democrat on for next. What's meaning? Or when do you have to have that done back? Because, you know, we're not meeting again for April, so sixteen. We don't have to do a special meeting.
We shouldn't. I mean, I don't know when we have to actually have them named. I just. I was, I think today was the last day I could ask you for how many I needed, but we'd already done that with the previous order back in Mar- or back in, earlier in March or February. So I'd have to look at code to see if there's a particular time. There's probably not, like if the, again, it's the same thing. The executive committees don't give me a name, then at some point it becomes our responsibility to appoint someone. So.
Well, just let us know what you need if it comes, if you need us to do something.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Yeah, so Mike's here for number ten.
Number ten. Morning, commissioners. First of all, thank you, um, for the raises you gave to all employees here. It's awesome seeing the budget. First, thank y'all for that. James has shut, um, has been a part-time anti-coal officer for a while. Of course, you know that I'm down one. Um, I'm asking, it was in the budget for him to have two full-time. And I'd like to go ahead and move him over to the full-time staff and he can start working today. He, I mean, he's doing part-time work Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. It just, I would have a full staff for him.
Second, home favor.
Aye. Thank you.
Yep.
So have a good day.
You too, brother.
Can you take the room ready for them? The, uh, new ship, I know you said ten of something.
Yeah, they're supposed to be here at ten, so.
But I don't have enough of the judges, just technically one major or something.
Well, I just realized Wes is not here and won't be here for the self-right funding, so. He's in the.
You know.
Yeah, I know what it is. Um, I, I think we can do that without him.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's, it's a grant, right?
No. It's the cell phone.
Yeah, it's a cell phone exploitation software is what it is. So.
You have something to say.
It's on that Allison, just like you know, no time, Graham. We used to like allocate money to our certain ones and another department takes certain ones to pay for it. And it started getting more expensive, more expensive. But then when Wes went through and checked how many downloads were done, majority of downloads were done to our detective bureau and our, and then drug cash was also, there's a sex crimes and stuff like that, so.
So we're talking about having, getting in ourselves rather than casting it out?
No, I think, I don't think that's where you're going. They just asked in the county commission, city council, some sort of on the way. I understood the last time, but I don't want to speak with Wes. He might change that one out. I don't know.
So he's working on it and he said there's different packages.
Yes.
Because I think it's between fifteen and twenty-five thousand dollars. But he said, there's so many downloads and he said, if you want to purchase more later, you can. But I think what he would recommend was start at the lower level. And my, my suggestion, because it's already ran out. It ran out March first and he didn't realize that. He thought he had to end March. Would be approved according to Wes's suggestion.
Minimal.
Uh, whatever his suggestion, yeah, because I think it's over fifteen thousand. But I also know they, that he said there's several people that need it and they can't get the info they need right now.
I don't want to hold it up.
Mental.
It's a, it's a, it's probably the most important tool that they use these days.
I don't mind. You talking about going to minimal mountain, start with.
What I'll just go with as he recommends. I mean, you don't have the info. He can only send it to you.
Well, it's, it's, but it's probably less than twenty-five, right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so let's, why don't we approve up to
Twenty-five.
And then if we have to have an emergency meeting to adjust for a special meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so I move that we approve up to twenty-five thousand for the self-right, uh, subscription.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
I was following you. Thanks, Amy or Will Burton, whoever did this qualification. Um, every year in April, it's a proclamation for fair housing.
And we approve.
Second.
For clean.
Home favor.
Aye.
Next is the building appeals board. We haven't had one and we need one.
Amen.
So I guess my thoughts, you were going to ask how many more people?
How many lords?
Well, excellent.
I mean, more members.
More members. I think we have, need to have, uh, five rights and we've identified, what, three?
Well, one gentleman I talked to the other day said he, I, I think he would be on it. I just didn't talk, told him it wasn't approved, gentlemen, or we haven't went through the process yet.
So why don't we today establish the board and then do appointments in April? Does that work?
I don't mind doing that.
And that'll give us time to identify five people. And, and put the word out to Amy if you could put on our Facebook page and website.
It's on the website. I'll.
Is it already?
Yeah, I'll post it on the Facebook. Yeah.
Thank you.
And anybody you know.
Yeah, and I, I'll get Amy with it because there's certain qualifications they have.
Okay, yeah, just, let's, let's get that out there, so.
Yeah, I'll have Alan side of.
I move that we reestablish the building appeals board as required by code.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
We able to write that down for April?
Yeah. So this is the grant application for community collections. True, I have another engagement. We didn't be here, but, um, it's basically you guys approve them that she can apply and then you have to sign all this stuff.
I'm looking to approve.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
Jeff Prosser texted yesterday and said he wasn't going to be able to make the date. He's not coming in to think about making the date. And on this.
Well, that's true, that. So he resigned from the, um, Urban Renewal Authority and he has been the chair of that for a long time, done a lot of work to try to sell Hope Free Park. Um, so first I'm going to move that we accept his resignation from the board.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
And then I move that we approve, uh, the very well-written, uh, letter that Amy put together for us for Jeff's service, thanking him.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
Yeah, we approved the grant.
Did you not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were shuffling.
No.
And Tom made the motion.
Remember, I can hear now. That's a huge difference.
It's.
Number seven.
Just ask for letters.
Yeah, we've already approved these, but we have to move to officially approve them today because we had put them on the agenda. Um. It's just support letters for Senator Manchin's earmark grants for Ansted and Montgomery, two projects and for one project in Ansted and two in Montgomery that we discussed at last week's meeting but hadn't noticed yet, so maybe we approve.
So you had to do no pro.
No pro.
Pro. Home favor.
Aye.
Okay, so you guys have talked with Allison Laura about that letter.
Yeah.
She sent a draft this morning, but I know it's Allison, this Allison will
Good.
slaughter it. So it's a letter to the D O H about the handicap accessibility of the Baytown Park.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you could approve it after Allison.
In, uh, yeah, in the concept and then let me circulate this.
All right, we can.
We did discuss it and it's, I think it's an important letter to, um, D O H to try to get some things repaired and no kill, so, um, and ADA accessibility to its parks. So I move that we approve the letter and concept with my edits that I will circulate.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye.
Aye. They won't be substantive. They'll just be.
A man.
This is the letter to Southern Soil. And this is about the multiple projects. You guys asked Wes to draft a letter. Um, about a lot of the creek issues. Speaking of creek issues, we got it invoiced today. Apparently we want them. Is it Hamilton?
Yeah, it's another creek.
Yeah, has been done. Like he removed those trees, so.
I've already edited this, so I haven't any advance.
A motion to approve that.
Second.
Home favor.
Aye. And I, I want to tell you, Angela and I have worked on this for four years trying to get creeks in our area taken care of and Southern Soil keeps pushing it back on the back burner. Um, I was able to talk to Commissioner Kent Lenhart. Um, and he would like, also like a copy of the letter so that he can work it from his side back.
Okay, well, if that's, if that's true, then why don't we? Amy, could you add the, and then we'll sign it again.
You want him to CC on the bottom?
Yeah, CC on the bottom for permission of agri-fulture. So we'll just hold this.
And, uh.
And re-sign that one here. Um.
Is Leslie, I don't. However.
Yes.
Number, is that what she's?
Yeah, this is her resolution number six for Armstrong Palton Water Tank, Water Tank.
Dana?
Good morning.
Morning.
Before you today, you have, uh, resolution number six. This is related to the CDBG grant that the commission got on behalf of the Armstrong PSD. Um, Palton Water Tank Project. Originally, this was the Deepwater and Palton Upgrade Project. But we did have to pivot that to just be the Palton Water Tank Upgrade. Um, the total amount of this resolution is two thousand, six hundred, fourteen dollars and thirty cents. And this is six invoices from Region Four Planning and Development Council from August twenty twenty-three to January, the end of January twenty twenty-four.
Any questions, committee? Now, I'll make a motion to approve the CGV grant. Resolution number six for Armstrong PSD.
Second, home favor.
Aye.
Hey, Leslie, we're going to put, um, those issues of, that you've been emailing us about with projects eighteen and nineteen for New Haven and, um, Canoffalls on the, uh, on a future agenda, probably on the sixteenth of April, um, to discuss and get a full update.
Okay, and, um, I would encourage, I sent out an invitation yesterday related to Canoffalls PSD. If at all possible, it would be beneficial for you all to attend the call that's March twenty-fifth at three o'clock. State and FEMA representatives will be available to discuss the Channelton Hollow sewer issue.
Three o'clock. Three o'clock, when again?
March twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
You too. Under thirteen million.
So this is reappointment of garden zoning appeals numbers for Dan Hill. William Hughes, John Hoffman and William Lights. They all expire January first. Okay, very issues.
So Dan Hill's expires in twenty twenty-five, Hughes expires in January first, twenty twenty-six. Hoffman expires January first, twenty twenty-six, and Mr. Lights expires on January first, twenty twenty-seven. I move we approve.
Okay, I have a question first, Allison. If Dan is on Board of Zoning Appeals, how can he be on the building appeals board too?
They're completely.
Indifferent.
There's that, the board zoning is under zoning, the building of hills is under the building.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, if there were an issue, we, he could resign and then, you know, once we do those appointments. That's a good point. I would.
Did we do it? I can't remember.
Yeah.
We approved, right?
Yeah.
Home favor.
Uh, aye.
All right, so together.
And then you have to sign up for the choose.
Okay.
All right, the last night is a special, we say on March twenty-seventh meeting.
Well, I think that we've handled all of our, our budgets, all of our requests after this afternoon. Uh, I would motion to cancel the meeting for the twenty-seven.
A second.
Home favor.
Aye.
I mean, I expect it's possible we'll have to have a special meeting sometime.
I think. For a couple of quick things. Yeah, for the report letters and maybe.
Yeah, I'm trying to fix that.
Emergency ballot commissioner on that. Yeah. I'll have to do buzzing while we out of town.
All right, so nine thirty, we got uh, the F B L opens. Try to stay on time here. Sign all these.
This is for the judicial annex roof replacement and the masonry repair on the memorial building. Long last. Two for the. Annex, yeah, so here's the two for the annex. Well, surely.
Is it time for me to open this?
Yeah, it's nine thirty. I've got nine thirty.
Making sure, because the last time I had a group.
Yeah, rotating.
Okay, I have a bid from Tri-State Roofing and Sheet Metal Company of West Virginia. For a hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars.
That's for the annex, right?
This is for the annex roof, yes.
What is it for?
Tri-State Roofing and Sheet Metal Company of West Virginia.
Hundred and twenty-two.
Hundred and twenty-two, seven twelve, right, John?
Hundred and twenty-two, seven twelve.
Okay. And. I found the company name on this. Okay, and we have a bid from Sutter Roofing and Metal Company in Clarksburg for eighty-four thousand four hundred dollars.
Yeah, I guess next step is to get somebody to look to and make sure they're. Yeah.
I'm opening a bid on Keystone Masonry Restoration in LaFer, Pennsylvania. Is the only bid on the memorial building, basically.
And this is just the library side, right, Amy?
Part, and not the complete library side.
Right, that's where the.
Yeah, okay. Um, so the bid is eighty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars even.
Can you repeat that?
Eighty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-nine.
Man. I am shocked. It's a lot better than I thought.
I was a little concerned though.
Yes, I was too.
We're going to have to have that one reviewed too. All right, good. Well, now we have time for executive session over.
You want to, okay.
Yeah.
It's fine.
So I move that we go into executive session to get legal advice on a couple of the reimbursements that I have questions about. And um, yeah, he's on, he's on there and Michael, we'll just call you from in the. Um, Bruce's office.
I recall meeting back to order. We just uh, got our executive session. We had some advice for attorney, Ms. Taylor.
And my decisions remain in executive session. It resolved my concerns. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve the vouchers and invoices as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess it's uh, Matt, Mr. Ford?
Good morning. It's time here to cover a couple of topics this morning. First is the uh. What we've been referring initially to as the former Rainell landfill or dump. It wasn't a uh. A permitted landfill, so technically a dump that was used by the town of Rainell for twenty or thirty years, about. Twenty or thirty years ago before the Greenbrier County Landfills opened. It um. Was used up until uh, just for the town of Rainell, but it is in Fayette County. About two miles from. The lumber mill on Snake Island, Rhode Island. And um, we're proposing. The uh, the Snake Island Recreation Area. It's a five acre piece of property. Um, it's not what you typically, if you go there, you would probably be surprised that it was a landfill. It's because it's, it's overgrown, a lot of it's capped. And it, it doesn't have an odor like the typical landfill would. But we've been working with the D E P to do site assessment. And we've completed the phase one. And that was done before New River Gorge Regional Development Authority acquired the property. To facilitate redevelopment. Andy Davis is here to talk about their involvement quickly. We've uh, we've done the phase one. We started the phase two. So we've done some soil borings and the maps that are in. This packet. See. Four page. Show um. All those maps from four on, show a site, show a site assessment work that's been completed. And uh, thankfully the, the site is not that contaminated. We uh, we have some soil gas sampling to do and some surface water and some sediment sampling. Uh, I'm not going to say we're going overboard, but we are being um, extra cautious with the assessment. Because the, the goal was to have recreational use uh. Look on the. Third page of the packet. I've showed you all this map before, but I pointed out where the landfill is located. So it's on that. Yellow line about two miles from Rainell. As you can see, the yellow line is in Fayette County. And um. Currently, it's, it was the only piece of property available on the whole Meadow River Rail Trail corridor that was available for redevelopment. It's a, it's an upstream point, so we make, want to make sure that it's not contributing to contamination that's going into the river. Um, and impacting the rest of the recreational corridor. We want to make sure that we put a. Kai ramp or camping areas that we're not exposing the public to any contamination that's uh. At harmful levels. So we're going through all that process. Andy, do you want to talk about the New River Gorges? Interesting problem.
Sure. Be glad. Hey, everyone. Andy Davis from the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority. Matt reached out to us a few years ago now about this piece of property. Gave us essentially the same rundown that you just received. And painted the picture of what this site could be. Um, we were familiar with the Meadow River Rail Trail project and it was. Pretty easy to see the value of this piece of property as it relates to not only the rail trail, but. The vision of the Meadow River recreational border with this being an access point for really every kind of trail user. Understanding that the town of Rainell uh, has put work towards river access in the flat water area between town and this. Uh, piece of property also adds value to this as a both access uh, area above the, the higher class rapids uh, that are downstream. But it would also serve as an access point for those boaters, the skilled boaters who want to put on the river there. So this had a very high redevelopment value, as you know. That's what we ask uh, when folks come to us with redevelopment projects uh, defined in use. And we had it. So uh, understanding that N R G R D A has played a role. With pieces of property uh, that have brownfields contamination. Currently playing that role uh, in other counties. Matt asked us if you would take the ownership of a property being as it is in Fayette County. So we said yes, and we have a pending. Application to the U S E P A for remediation grant, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, as much as we could get. Um, but to go for is not only the remediation, but uh, complimentary um, capping toward the redevelopment of these intended uses. So. We have stakes in the project. We see it as a, a great value to uh, not only Fayette County and Greenbrier County, but really to the region. Uh, with understanding that the Meadow River has world-class uh, alcohol recreation for hikers, climbers, bikers, boaters. And we should know later this year about the receipt of that grant, in which case we will move forward with that as the uh. As the recipient of the grant.
Typically, those grants are announced in the summer. And then uh. They vary the date. Sometimes it's early summer, sometimes it's late summer. But should know soon when that grant's awarded. Thanks, Andy. But the ask is um, so as I mentioned, all the previous site assessment work. Was done under contract with the Department of Environmental Protection. And my company, Greenbrier Environmental Group, is also the brownfields contractor for the state. Um, when we were looking at sites to use Fayette County Site Assessment Grants. Um, this is one that came to mind. So, I mean, really no pressure on Fayette County Commission. If you decide not to fund this, the D E P can fund it. Um, just the Fayette County Commission has over three hundred thousand dollars remaining in their brownfields assessment grant and um. E P is hoping you get to start spending that. In quick order, they want other people to, yeah, all grantees are being pushed to spend money. So that you can apply for more. You have to have a certain amount of expense, so you can apply for more funding. So we're looking, I put a cost estimate together. It's probably around um, forty thousand dollars to do the additional site assessment that's needed. We're taking a lot of surface water samples, a lot of sediment samples. And then the uh, the analysis that we're running is pretty extensive. Again, just to make sure that. The work that we're doing. Uh, shows that we're not putting public at harm's edge in this project. And again, to make sure that this property isn't contributing to contamination. Upstream of everything we're trying to do on the Meadow River.
I don't have a problem with that. The commissioner still does.
Forty thousand dollars?
Yep.
I, I have a question though. Matt, one sites thirty-three and thirty-nine, both read high lead.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Can you give us an idea of how you make sure that those breathe better the next time that. A bore is done in that area? Do you excavate everything around that area?
Yeah.
How is it done?
So um. See which ones that is. Yeah, thirty-three and thirty-nine. Um. Yeah, look like they're over industrial, those will be excavated.
Okay.
So um. That goes into the site reuse planning. Like there's an area that needs excavated as close as those are to the creek. Those make, it makes logical sense that that might work, be where you put the, the river access point, because you got to excavate that anyways.
Right.
So is this part of the five hundred thousand dollars that? It's not.
It's not. That's uh. What they applied for was cleanup funds. So what, what all the site assessment is doing is getting it to a point. But if they're awarded, we put it in what's called the voluntary remediation program. All the site assessment work will be done and then all their cleanup funds can be, can go towards. Uh, the excavation of whatever contamination you find. Um, capping to cover up whatever needs to be covered up. And then um. Again, that's where we get creative, because if there's like the, the samples that are, are hot that you see. Help us out, because it justifies excavation. Then you have to stabilize it. Well, then you can get creative and. That excavation and stabilized excavation becomes your river access point. So uh. But again, that's, it's around forty thousand dollars for the work that gets done. And that includes one round of groundwater sampling. We, we may ask for more depending on how Fayette County's grant goes. Have to do additional groundwater sampling. Because the D E P requires eight rounds before you can close out a site. It's the current guidance. Right now, we have uh, we need two rounds on part of the wells. And one for the rest. So we've got some additional sampling. Towards the end. But again, no pressure with Fayette County Commission. Um. The cleanup grant can cover the additional groundwater monitoring. The D E P has funds that can cover the groundwater monitoring. Uh, long story short, there's lots and lots of money in brownfields redevelopment right now.
So what, it's not, it wouldn't, if the commission doesn't decide to do this, it doesn't put the project off in any time of that.
It does not. Um, what's advantageous for Fayette County is, again, you've got that large grant to use. To go towards brownfields projects and this is a brownfields project in Fayette County.
And the D E P is asking us to spend money because we have not yet. And this is a shovel-ready project.
How much did we approve last meeting, remember?
You approved for um, us just to do the asbestos and then he was going to come and present about Rainell and then we were going to talk about structural assessments and how much those cost.
Yeah, on the asbestos, you've probably got about. Twenty to thirty thousand dollars allocated in asbestos inspections. I don't know yet on the structural amounts, but. A very small portion of that, that large grant you have has been allocated.
And when is the, the grant uh. Supposed to be due spent?
It finishes up in twenty-five?
Yeah. So basically, we have a year and a half spending that money.
Yeah, and I, most of those grants, um, the max would, it used to be two hundred thousand. But with all the uh, infrastructure money that's out. They raised the limit. So you've got more than usual. What I could tell you, most, most counties into these have trouble spending the two hundred thousand they used to get.
So if, if this is not, when's the next one you have to be put, that has to be put in? So we spend this in a twenty twenty-five, when you put in for the next grant. If, if we get it spent.
I'm not sure how it works that you can, I, I don't know what the timeframe is that you can um. If you're still, I think the last year you can apply for a cleanup grant, the last year if you're assessing grants.
They want to see.
That you've spent.
A certain percentage.
This is what I'm getting at. The next question, next question, in, in the twenty-five that's not spent. In twenty twenty-six, do you file in twenty twenty-six for twenty twenty-seven?
Yes, or would you file in twenty twenty-five for twenty twenty-six and they overlap like?
If you haven't spent it.
You haven't spent it. You have to wait. So we would have to wait another year if it's not spent.
Yeah, file for an extension on your current grant.
Or file for an extension so it could put us out a year.
Another two years.
Another two years if the money's not spent. Then that's where I was going with my question.
Yeah, then that was my, my thought on bringing it up to you.
That's the reason I was, you know, I don't have a problem with it because if it's not spent, we cannot, we can waste it. It would be a problem refile for a grant or even if we refile for it, being accepted would be two years out for me, for being approved, to spend money.
Correct.
Matt, did I, I missed, did you say how many acres are here?
Uh.
There's five total acres?
Okay.
It was pretty affordable when it was acquired. It was free.
Very generous of you guys.
And I want to.
Andy, the heck of a business guy.
Yes, but I want to let the commission know. That's one of the reasons I, I'm, I'm for. Ben, because if we have an issue and this is not spent, we'll have a problem refiling and we may be out two years. Of, of having something approved and then getting that grant approved. We, we won't have any money.
When will we have more information on the structural?
Any day now.
Okay, so.
He's reached out.
Maybe for. Could you be ready by the sixteenth for our meeting?
Could be. Yeah, I've sent the information to a couple of different consulting firms that do the structural here in order. To get uh, to get quotes from them, so I could know how much that would cost. Um, but yeah, and, and no rushfulness. We're still working through the uh. The last phase. We're working on the report now. So, and then we have to put in the work plan. Another thing to add on is that I mentioned the D E P has. They've got close to three million dollars and they're also having trouble spending their money. I learned. So if it gets to the point where Fayette County does spend all of your money and a site comes up that you need to have assessed, we could just ask the D E P to pay for it.
So I just don't want this to be the same way of the REAP grant.
Yeah, I agree.
You still, I mean.
Yeah, I agree. But I think we can wait until we get the structural presentations in April to make the decisions about. How to spend it.
Okay, that's good.
With five acres and only two hotspots, I don't see.
For a landfill? Yeah, I was. It's amazing.
That was an eye-opener.
And then something else to bring to your attention along these lines. The A M L grant funding is out that you can apply for. So be thinking about what you want to use that money for. Basically, if it's a co-impacted community or area with an old A M L site near it, Fayette County essentially.
Does it has to be adjacent to it? Okay. Is there any limits on the being away from it? Distance road connection? Okay.
He's kind of filled us in on
Yeah.
some of those errors of.
I've seen it used for one example was a tiny home manufacturing project and the A M L site was almost a mile away. So.
And the project that's yeah, the project that's always in the back of my mind for Fayette County because there are A M L sites right there. And that's a big recreation area that's building up is our landfill. Doing an assessment on it as well.
So you just.
And it's, and then that would just help move that along.
Yeah. So you just want to postpone this to the sixteenth?
And then one other grant that's available is transportation alternative grants are coming soon. I found out from the D O H. So.
A M L is due by the end of May.
To horses, to horses count.
For transportation.
Oh, yeah.
Andy, Andy's telling me they do. So.
Yeah, yeah. Horses on the Meadow River rail trail, maybe as we speak.
That would be cool.
I saw bikes down there the other day.
Yeah.
All right, well. Get all quick.
Hey, we need a motion to move that.
Do we need a motion to move it? Because it was just a presentation. We can make the decisions.
Okay, alright.
Actually, don't remind structural assessments on there too. So I'll go ahead and move it. I'll postpone it to the sixteenth of April.
Second, all favor. Thank you.
Okay, so the leadership group is ready to come down. We need fifteen seats. I'm just moving people out. But I think it'd be a good opportunity for like municipal.
Twelve, fourteen, fifteen, I mean, I see.
You got two on that.
Yeah, two or three. Yeah, and we've got some seats over here. We used to have extra chairs, but I don't know where they want to. Let's let the kids get in first. Yeah, yeah.
It's leadership Fayette County.
Where are they coming from?
Hey, that was really good.
Yeah, he's bringing them down dirt in Judge Lakes. He's very friendly. He's bringing them down.
Right now?
We shared about it. It's always a screenshot. Oh, yeah. In a campaign.
What?
Yeah, were you giving them?
Take a picture of it if you wanted to contact information.
That's probably doomed. I'm gonna take pictures. Really? Meadow Bridge, Oak Hill, Smithers. Smithers is being put over.
Because she can't appear in person. So it'll be Meadow Bridge on that way.
Oh, he's speaking for them.
And then Montgomery, the Mount Huts here.
But it's one mic and it fits right in one of those. And you stand in the corner of our council chamber and talk at the level I'm talking right now and hear it, just like you're speaking right in the mic.
I tell you what I wanted. I want to be that. I don't care your face and bite.
Well, my thought is either it'll shut up right off. They usually like read and forget and say something.
They thought some cameras that that microphone actually controls facing where it hears the sound.
Yeah.
You got the microphone now.
I would love to have something like that. Yeah, let's see how it records like when you do YouTube. Because I hate for it to have so much.
I have a quote.
So like, for example, like flaws.
We never have that anywhere.
Ruth, I have a quote from that. Did they get something new? I think that's what those guys came and gave me a quote for. So I'll I'll look through Megan.
All right. Mr. Heaton?
We got two on the elevator.
Okay.
But we can drop this stuff out. Keep things rolling.
But to you.
So what I thought we'd do today, thank you for indulging us. Ruth, thanks for setting this up and really it's something about me and about them. And if it's okay with you, I mean, everything's about me, but. They're going to tell you a story about what we've done so far this year and what we're going to be doing. And then hopefully, I have a minute to ask questions. Does that sound good?
Yes, sir.
You want them to come up? You already need to pass the microphone.
They are, they are, they should be practiced at, do they need to speak in the mics for the?
For the.
On, okay. No, they can come up. Except for the crutches kid. Hey, who's first?
I found one too.
And there's the crutches kid. That's how we were.
You can tilt it down for yourself.
Might be easy to hold it. I want your address and net.
Hi, my name is Ashton Prince. I go to Oak Hill High School and I'm part of Leadership Fayette County. I'd like to talk about the first session that we got to have. So we started by meeting together at the Fayette Institute of Technology. And I got to experience and meet everybody that was in the program now. I got to meet Jeff. I got to meet Alex, which is our lead mentor. We then got to go to ACE. And we had breakfast there. After that, we had met some of the people who worked there and we did some team building exercises. Since we didn't really know everybody who was in the program at first, we decided that would be a good idea to get to know everybody and figure out like how to work in a team. We then went to their tree obstacle course center where we had the opportunity to experience that where some people might not be a huge fan of heights or anything. We just put everyone in a different situation to where we had to just control ourselves and be calm. And after that, they provided lunch for us. And we went back to the Fayette Institute of Technology.
Hi, my name is Delaney Haynes. I am part of the Leadership Fayette County class this year. And I'm going to talk about our second session. So we met at FIT again. We've been doing that before every single session. And we took a bus over to AOTG. And we met Dr. Mandy over there. She has a PhD in international leadership. So we are talking to her. We've talked to her probably four or five sessions this year. And she's giving us a lot of leadership advice, which is helping us. She gave us a true callers kind of activity. So we did a little worksheet, split into groups, stuff like that, that helped us figure out what our leadership type was and how we can use our emotions and how we deal with things to help other people with leadership. We finished by eating a little buffet over at AOTG. And then we went back to FIT at the end of the day. Thank you, guys.
Hello, it's wonderful to meet you guys. My name's Emily. I'm from Meadow Bridge and I'm a member of Fayette Leadership. I'm going to talk about Taste of Bridge Day. If you guys have never been, you really should go. It was AOTG this year. It is every year. So you should go next year. But we like helped judges. We went around and we like got like the food from the judges, judges for the judges to the restaurants. So we got to do that and we got to eat and we got to experience all the fun stuff. It was a really great experience for all of us. And I feel like we should continue doing that as a class in the future.
Hi, my name is Jordan Harris. I'm part of the Fayette County Leadership. And I tore my ACL, so I'm just going to be sitting right here post-surgery. So I'm going to basically be talking about the Taste of Bridge Day, not the Taste of Bridge Day, but our meeting after it. And it consisted of us going to Cathedral. And there we kind of had our breakfast before we went to the Fayette Theater. And there we met up with Dr. Mandy and we discussed Taste of Bridge Day because some of us volunteered of bringing the food from the restaurants to the judges. And we told her how she could improve, what she did great and what we're looking forward to. And then after that, we practiced some public speaking and kind of coming up with things on the fly. So we practiced some storytelling activities and we got three cards and we had to make a story based on those. And we worked on telling stories in different perspectives and in different persons, so first person, second person. And we also had conversations and we learned how to maybe have different opinions on things, but still be able to argue with that, but also doing that sounding educated and not just arguing with no purpose.
You're not getting out of coming. Hi, nice to meet you. I'm AJ Bain. I'm a junior at Oak Hill High School and I'm part of the current class of Leadership Fayette County. So I'm going to be talking about one of our earlier leadership meetings. So we went to Rivers. We met with the owner of Rivers and talked about what it is like to own rivers, own a tourism business around here, what it's like currently owning a business in this area. While we were there, we also met with Chris Fussell. He's the owner of Waterstone. He's also a teacher at Yale. We talked to him about what it's like to teach at Yale, what it's like to work out of state and come back here. We also discussed controversial topics that he deals with on a daily basis. It was like, or he deals with like a very like sensitive situations to where it was like, we ran these experiments to where it'd be like, what situation do you find more that you would have to send more troops to? And we ran that just to see how all the people in leadership would feel about that. And then afterwards, we did some more team building exercises to where we discussed different topics like equality and equity in women's sports. And even though like if you are not involved in women's sports or a topic you're not involved with, whether it be women's sports or anything else, how you should still hold some responsibility to it and understand why it's a controversial subject.
Hi, my name is Jackson Pino and I'm a part of the Leadership Class of twenty twenty-five. And I'm here today to talk about Thanksgiving Day. We went through leadership and volunteered at the Lewis Community Center to help those in need on Thanksgiving. And it was a really great experience. I was there with Cadence Pennington and another graduate of Leadership Fayette County named Catherine Dyer. And on that day, I learned that it's not always about what we feel when we're volunteering, but more about what the people feel when they receive.
My name's Addison Salvatore. I'm a junior at Echo High School and I'm in Leadership Fayette County. And I'm going to be talking about our Christmas session. It was super fun. It was a great bonding experience. And we all wore pajamas, Christmas pajamas and Christmas socks. We had some that lit up. That was a great experience. We were at Possum Creek Retreat. And we were able to learn leadership skills. We listened to podcasts. We watched videos. And it was a really good experience.
Hi, I'm Janessa Sully. I am from Oak Hill High School with Leadership Fayette County. And I'm going to talk to you about our college session. So we met with Dr. Mandy, who was a college administrator and Mr. Chris Fussell, who is professor at Yale. And Ms. Phoebe, who is a counselor at a school, I think in Ohio. And she does everything with like advising students on college and everything to do with college. So we talked about the application process, early enrollment, what types of colleges would be best for which types of people. And we also met with past leadership members who are, who told us about their college experience as they're like presently in college. And it was really great to hear their advice and real life experiences as people who are soon to be applying and attending colleges.
Hi, I'm Rianne Davis. I'm a junior at Oak Hill High School. And one of our most recent sessions was at the Gaines State Fayetteville. In this session, we talked to alumni of the Leadership Program, Jessica Zukowski, who was telling us about different programs that we can do outside of going straight to college, different gap year programs where we can make money. Because she was trying to explain to us that college really isn't for everybody. And sometimes you have to explore other options instead of college. And then we had lunch and then and then we.
They're teenagers.
Yeah.
After that, we had Dr. Mandy come back, who has been a big help for us throughout this program. And we kind of narrowed down the issue we want to fix within our community, which, as we all have talked about, we learned that we think there should be more accountability within the school system. And we plan on going to the Board of Education sometime within the next month or two to talk to them about fixing this issue.
Hello, I am Jordan Floyd and I'm also part of Leadership. A couple of weeks ago, we were invited by the Canyon Rim Rotary Club to attend one of their regular meetings at the Gaines State. And while we were there, the guest speakers were President Gee from W B U, President Stewart from W B U Tech, and General James A. Hoyer, who is over like president over innovation at W B U. And they were the speakers. And so they talked to us a lot about how they hope to grow West Virginia and how they hope to grow our state through the colleges. And then us as students also got to participate in discussion with them and ask questions and sort of share maybe like our ideas or questions and really talk about how we're hoping and how they're hoping to grow the state of West Virginia. And then afterwards, we got to meet with them one-on-one as well as other people who attended the meeting. And it was really cool for us to sort of be part of the adults and sort of be a part of the people right now who are in the state and who are also hoping like we are to grow where we live.
Hi, I'm Tila Hicks. I'm a junior at Millenial High School and I'm also a part of Leadership Fayette County. Today, I will be talking about our last most recent session where we had a cooking challenge. At the beginning of our day, we got into small little groups and we decided what we was going to be cooking. And then we went to program. We got all the ingredients we would need for all of our recipes. And then after that, we took and we went and we cooked all of it for our appetizers. We had salad and veggie tray. And after that, for our appetizer, we had chicken and garlic mashed potatoes. And for our dessert, we had a cinnamon sugar blondie brownie topped with ice cream. We got to meet the owner of Pinheads, the recent leader of Leadership Fayette County, and also a bunch of other dignitaries. And overall, it was a great experience.
So my name is Kenny Spinnington and I'm a junior at Oak Hill High School. So I'm going to be talking about today's session. Today, we got a little tour from Sheriff Mike Fridley. And we also were able to come in here, which is a great opportunity and experience. And we're also going to get lunch at Secret Sandwich.
I appreciate you guys letting us be, being able to come in here and just get this opportunity for us to learn how the county commission actually works. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Rian Ann Turner and I am a student. I'm at Meadow Bridge High School and I am part of the Leadership Fayette County. And today we have heard many of our past meetings, but I'm going to talk about one of our future meetings. One of our future meetings, we are going to talk to the Board of Education about what we think needs to be changed within our school system. We've had many conversations about just the accountability of the resource officers and the discipline issues at our schools. And we have also talked to some eighth graders and played games with them similar to the games that we played with ACE our first meeting. And that's why I'm saying.
Except for you'll probably have lunch.
All this food talk right before lunch. Is that everybody? You guys did great. I mean, your eye contact and your diction, just fantastic. And I see a couple of young women that I've known since they were little in the front there. I can't even believe you're old enough to be part of this now.
You've actually done a lot better than I do. I'm trying to get some, you know, some ideas, you know.
You don't see, but we have like cheat sheets up here. Pronounce stuff.
And, and you know, when I went to school at Oak Hill, I didn't have a professor from Yale. I just had teachers that yelled. Hopefully you don't have that, but you know, welcome. And I think one of the, somebody won an award this past week or something.
A student or a teacher?
A student. Why don't you guys go ahead and tell us about what you win?
Recently, I got to attend the West Virginia State Poetry Out Loud Competition at the Culture Center in Charleston. And it was my first time ever doing it. And so I was actually very nervous, but I was also really excited because I love performing, I like poetry. And so it was a really cool experience for me to get to meet other people who are passionate about that. And I managed to place in the top ten. And I was very grateful for that. Very grateful to God. I give all the glory to Him. I was praying a lot backstage and I really think He's the one who gave me the strength to get out there and do it. I do perform actually at the historic Fayette Theater, shout out to them. But yeah, so that was, I was very grateful to be a part of that, grateful that the state is, that's something that they fund and that they appreciate, which are the arts. And hopefully I can try again next year and maybe move my way up. So thank you.
Just so some backstory, I go to the Fayette Institute of Technology. I'm in their pre-pharmacy program. So in that program, I have the opportunity to do a competitive event called HOSA, which is for future health professionals. Within that, we have different categories that we can compete in. There can go anything from veterinary, clinical nursing, forensic science. I had decided to compete in pharmacy science. So that starts with our local competition, which is held at the Fayette Institute of Technology. I had to compete a, two skills that was included in the pharmacy science guidelines. I had one first place there for my local competition, so I then got to advance to states. I had to take a test before I could go and compete those and we had went to Marshall University. We're very thankful that they gave us that spot to be able to do what we really want to do, which is advance in the health and medical field. And I competed against four different people. I had to do three different skills that were also in those guidelines. And I had one first place in the state level in pharmacy science. So in June, I will be going to Houston, Texas, and I will be competing in their international division.
What types of things, skills do they test in pharmacy sciences? Chemistry or?
So the two skills that I did for my local competition, I had to identify some instruments that we use in just the pharmacy atmosphere. So I had fifteen minutes and I had to name fifteen items, I had to spell them correctly, had to give the proper use for them. And when you have a, a prescription for narcotics, you have to have a DEA number, which is completely different with each prescription. So with that, you have to make sure that it's valid. Now you can use a computer and it'll tell you right away, but obviously before you couldn't really do that. So we had to be able to identify that DEA number and they took five parts out of the prescription that are supposed to be in there. So I had to identify those five missing products. And sorry, there's also different skills that I had to do for the state one. I had to withdraw liquid from a vial, use the right measurements and the right directions on how to do that. It's very specific and yeah.
Great job, guys. Do you have any questions for us? You want us to talk to you about what we do?
Start there and come down.
Well, the county commission is, is, and municipalities such as the town of Fayetteville and town of Oak Hill are your local government entities. So the municipalities cover everything within their lines and the county is, governs everything outside of those lines. So what we do is we collect taxes. We use those taxes to maintain buildings like this one, to pay employees of the county. One of the other things we spend tax dollars on, I should just look at the agenda. We, we give to certain projects, you know, people come in and they say we need money for the food pantry or we need money for something else or to fix this or fix that. That's, that's what we do. We manage the money and usually chaos, in my opinion. We have to all three act together. We're not allowed to act independently, so we can't make decisions outside of the public setting. It's very important to, for the transparency in government, but that we not collaborate outside of the public setting about how we're going to spend taxpayer dollars and, and make important decisions. So we put everything on a public notice and including you guys are on our, attended from earlier this morning, Leadership Fayette County here and we tell everybody what we're going to talk about and then we get in here and we talk about it. And we've added additional layers transparency by, by letting people attend by Zoom. And we record all of our meetings and put it on YouTube and we have somebody taking minutes that we also publish on the web to kind of help you get through, maybe to the point YouTube you want to get to rather than have to watch the whole boring thing. Because it does get boring. We also are in charge of making sure with the county clerk that the elections go smoothly. So we have to do what's called a canvas and supervise the canvas to make sure that what we do is we randomly pick two precincts of the, how many do we have? Almost forty?
Forty.
Thirty-nine. Yeah. Forty precincts. And then we make sure we have people volunteer from both parties to hand count all of that. And then we make sure that our machines have counted properly just to kind of double check things. And then we have to certify the election results. So once it comes in, we have to say, okay, these are accurate and these are the people who have been elected properly in, in office. Trying to think of some of the other things.
Development.
We, right, economic development. So, you know, we love how small Fayette County is, but we also wish, wish we had more money for things like our schools. And in order to do that, we need to raise revenue and the way we raise revenue is taxes. We already taxed the most we are allowed to tax right now. So, you know, and and we're not political about this, but as Republicans, we don't like tax. So you know, we, we're trying to figure out how we can accomplish those things without raising taxes. The way we do that is we try to develop the economy better. So what we're trying to do is attract businesses to this area and focus some of the tax revenue we have toward expanding infrastructure. So more people have broadband, more people have running water and sewer. We have places everywhere north of the bridge in Fayette County along Route nineteen doesn't have sewer. And a lot of them don't have water, a lot of those areas. So what we're trying to do is attract industry in addition to feeding into our tourism industry. We're trying to attract other types of industry here. So our economy doesn't fall when the tourism season is dormant. So those are the types of things we're trying to do. And in order to do that, we've got to have better schools. We have to have access to broadband because the internet is here, you know, and, and we have people here who have less access and, and no clean water, just like a third world country. So the problem is a lot of those things are super expensive. So another thing we do is we ask for money from the federal and state governments to help pay for these things. So basically they tax us, they take our money and then we have to ask for it back. And we do ask for it back and we, we try to focus where we're requesting those funds in certain areas to make sure that they're going where they need to go to make Fayette County better for the people who live here and for the people we hope will come here. Because a lot of us, you know, you probably have relatives who had to leave the state because there weren't enough jobs and there weren't enough things for people to do. You're probably wondering if you can stay if you want to. And we're trying to, we're responsible to some extent to, to make that better for you and to try to create more jobs here by bringing industry here. And so that's a big thing that we're trying to do. Have I missed anything else? We also, anytime anybody wants to get money from the federal state government, they ask for support letters from us. So so we can put our support behind issues. If there are random things like roads that need to be fixed or something that's dangerous, we send letters to the state organizations in charge of fixing those things, even though we don't have any power over it, we can certainly put our weight behind requesting that these things get addressed by the people who are required to do it. We also have some responsibility over the public service districts that provide water here. And, and we have a lot that are failing. So we get involved in those cases to try to make sure that you know, people are getting water is our end goal, but, but to try to get to the bottom of what's going wrong and, and whether there's anything we can do to advocate for those facilities. So those are, those are just some examples of, of what we do, but, but two or three of us have to agree to anything for it to happen. And it has to happen in public. So everybody knows, you know, what we're doing. And those are very important components of it.
And while we cover the entire county, we each represent a district in the county. There's three districts. Commissioner Taylor takes care of New Haven. She's been here, this is her fourth year. Commissioner Luisas takes care of Plateau. This is his sixth year. I take care of the valley and this is my eighth year. We get to serve a six-year term. Every time that there's an election that's coming up, one of us have to rerun, rerun if we would like to, or others can challenge.
Although we have three different districts that we represent. As me as a commissioner, I will represent the whole county and I work for the whole county. That, that's, that's me.
And the whole county elects each of us. So when, whenever a new commissioner is up for a vote, the whole county votes. I think the importance and the reason there are districts is because the idea is that you live within the district and so you can understand better what the issues are in that area, because you know, the issues up here in Fayetteville are very different from what's going on in Meadow Bridge, very different from what's going on in the valley where I grew up. And, and so, you know, the idea is to have, just like with your Board of Education, to have members from each of these communities, so they understand the needs of that community. And that's a reason we, we drew, that's another thing we do is we draw district lines every few years based on the census. It's every ten years. But when the census comes out, the population has to be evenly based and that affects your, they're called managerial districts, but that affects our elections and importantly for you guys right now, who's on your Board of Education? And who's doing those things? So we redrew them to what, to what we thought more accurately reflected the people who lived in those areas. And, and I think that's going to make a difference in your school system. You'll have more people who are able to, you know, people in Fayetteville and Oak Hill, because right now I live two blocks from this courthouse, but I'm the New Haven representative. And to me, that wasn't very fair because I've lived two blocks from the courthouse. So we redrew the lines to make sure that New Haven is more New Haven. And, and that's more like across the river, Meadow Bridge and in that area, and that the valley is more the valley and that the plateau is really the people on the plateau, which is Oak Hill and Fayetteville. So now you're going to have more of, schools might be less likely to close, for example. If you have people from those communities on the Board of Education rather than people who live up here and don't care about the long commute and that sort of thing. So I'm glad Meadow Bridge got to keep the high school up there. That was, made me very happy and I wish we had kept ours too in the valley. But anyway, that's very long-winded, longer way of telling you what we do, but you guys have any questions?
I do want to say that's one of the reasons I don't talk very much is because
Because I talk too much.
I talk too much and the time, you know, so go ahead.
I know you guys cover the county and you have a lot of different people coming to you and saying they need money for this and this. How do you decide who to support with that and what not to? Like, how do you make those decisions together on what to support?
It's a question. Good question.
It's a really good question.
What's most important out of the twenty requests? And, and that's one of the factors, what's most important, what's the needs of each request? Some requests might be more needy, especially if it comes to water, if it comes to.
If something's an emergency that broke that we have to fix. But one thing that we did do differently that other commissions haven't is we decided, at least for the ones that are non-emergent requests, like for example, an emergency is when we have the floods or the fire in the gorge. We had to vote for funding to help pay for a helicopter, to help put out the fire in the gorge and things like that. Those are emergencies that we'll have to hear throughout the year. But if it's not an emergency, we're only considering those requests all, at all at one time twice a year, so we can look at them all at once. So I think previous commissions, they would just look at it and say, okay, this is a good idea. Do we have the money? Let's spend it. What we're doing, and then the money might be spent and a better idea will come along next month or something is greater need and then they don't have the money. You know, so what we're doing is we're taking a couple of times a year, we're looking at all the requests at one time. And we base it on a strategic plan that we came up with. So now there's certain needs that aren't, that don't fall within the strategic plan, like flood prevention and stuff like that, probably should now that I think about it, but, but, but the strategic plan sets our priorities. And so we look at the priorities that we agree upon, that plan is revised, is it every five years, ten years? We have to do it every ten years, but.
Yeah, but we're supposed to look at it like.
But we want to update it every couple of years just to make sure we're on the right track. So we want to see if it falls within that plan and the priorities that we'll set. If it doesn't, then it's not going to get funded. If it does, then we have to look and see which are the higher priorities and which can report with that. Smaller requests are much easier to approve than big requests.
And request also if it, in support of, supports the people and maybe some requests don't support the people in a category two, what supports, what's.
So if somebody comes in and says, I want this for my project and it's not going to benefit but ten people in Fayette County who are paying taxes, they're probably not going to get approved. You know, if, if they come in and they say this is going to benefit everybody in Fayette County or this is going to offer a benefit, like say a health department benefit or something like that. You know, that's something that's more likely to get funded because it's going to benefit more people who are paying for that benefit. And so that's, that's a big issue. That's a good point that we consider is, you know, how broad is the effect? Because everybody's paying into it and the municipalities have their own funding. So we take those, you know, they have to compete a little harder for funds because they have their own tax revenue. And the people outside of the municipalities do not. All they have is what, the money that we collect. They have their own tax revenue and the people outside of the municipalities do not. All they have is what the money that we collect. And so we have to take a look at that as a whole and say, okay, is this going to benefit? You know, if we put, you know, this money in here and it benefits only the small number of people, you know, what what are we taking away from everyone else?
That's why one of our priorities from Anstead to Route nineteen on Route sixty. Because we see a lot of opportunity there to help the county.
Any other questions?
So with making big decisions in our county, there are going to be people with opposing views. There's going to be backlash. So how do you all find it best to remain resilient in situations like this?
You can't please everybody. You gotta please.
Tough skin, I guess. I don't know.
I I take a lot of it personally, I'll tell you. It it's hard. He doesn't. I I do because, you know, I think we all are trying to do our best. And and you have to remind yourself that usually the majority is silent. And the people who, you know, support you may not be speaking up for you, but. Usually the complainers are the ones who have a special interest who didn't get their way. Or something like that. And and you know, we just, I just remind myself, people put their trust in me to be here and. And that I just need to keep doing my best and have confidence in everything I do. Like if I if I have doubts about something I'm doing. Um, then I'm I'm going to have to reconsider what I'm doing. Like, you know, I don't make any decision that I'm not fully comfortable with.
And one thing that you guys can do and spread around to other students and throughout your life. If you see something that you're passionate about and you don't believe you should vote that way. Let someone know before they vote. Don't do it after the vote. You know, we we hear from people after we do a vote. We don't hear from that many people before we do a vote.
Yeah, it's usually, we we put out this public notice and it's ignored until after the fact and then. And then we get the decisions, but but there's a, most decisions can be undone too. I mean, there are a lot of things, you know, if we make a mistake. And that's, that's a big important part of leadership is to recognize when you make a mistake. And accept that a decision is better than a decision. Because you make a decision, if you make a mistake, you could always go back, most of the time, go back and correct it. And you should be willing to admit that you've made a mistake and correct your error. And that's, you know, we've had to do that before we've made decisions to. Bring consultants on and we wish we hadn't done it because it ended up being a waste of money. And then, you know, there are just things you live and you learn. But but you have to have the confidence in your own um. Desire to serve to admit when you do something wrong, so you can fix it. Because that's, that's a sign of true leadership.
I was just going to ask you guys, um, like how you got to this position? Is it like something you've always been passionate about or did something? Um, inspired you to want to be a commissioner or something like that?
My dad talked me into it. My dad served twenty-two years at House delegates. He couldn't really serve anymore, so he he he's always wanted me to do it. And. I've I've done basically, as a county commissioner, it's business only anyway. I've done business since I was nineteen, so it was natural to me anyway. To me, I felt it was natural. Come in because that's all I've done is budgeting, developing, looking at projects and stuff like that. So. Uh, and I and I like this job because it's what I've done all my life. I was brought up, brought up doing this. Um, that's how I got into it.
I was concerned with the lack of water and I commented to some of my friends and they said, well, put your money where your mouth is and run. Uh, but, you know, we talked about lack of water. Thirty-nine percent of the county residents. Does do not have running water, so they can't go to their sink and turn it on and brush their teeth. Um, forty-two percent of the county don't have the ability to have a sewer. Um, so that's something that that we spend a lot of time on working with and and uh. Try to make some doors open up.
I never wanted to be in politics. I'm still not sure about it. Um, but I think. I think people who have the drive to help people, what motivated me, same reason I wanted to be a lawyer was to be able to help people. And, you know, a lot of people think that's cliche, but. But there are some of us out there who who just really want to do the right thing for people. And if you don't step up. It's hard to be in this, but for for the reasons you pointed out, but also. Um, because you're unpopular all the time, like somebody's always mad. But it doesn't pay though. It's it's, this is a part-time job. Um, so we all have full-time employment and you have this. What ends up being a full-time job on top of that full-time job. And you have to really. Um, be motivated by something altruistic to to want to do it unless you're power hungry. There are a few out there who who feel that way, but. But we need good people. We need people to fit this in. Government service, you know, you wonder why your politicians aren't great. It's because these jobs stink. They're not fun. Like you, you have to spend a full day doing this kind of stuff in in addition to your regular job. And people hate you for it, no matter what you do, no matter how hard you try. So, you know, keep that in mind, but but public service is also very rewarding because there's no other place where you can serve so many. With what you do.
And make change and better.
Yeah, make a difference.
So what I would like to ask, most of us are college-bound students or plan on going to college, whether it be local or out of state. What do you see careers that we should possibly go into that would help benefit Fayette County the best? Like lawyers, doctors, nurses, engineers?
Yes, and I tell you what, being in business all my life, there's two, there's two assets. I call them assets, but they're probably going to jump on me when I point them out. Two assets is very important to me in the development is a lawyer and a bookkeeper and accountant. So that to me, it it all revolves around being a lawyer and accountant when it comes to the county commission and development. I mean, I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I think about it.
I think there's a reason there's no degree requirement for this job. And and while being a lawyer comes in handy, we have lawyers. I do not advise the commission as a lawyer. I'm I'm a lawyer and I can think that way. But um, we have lawyers. So you can, I think the important skill is the the desire to help your fellow man. Because if you have that, no matter what your education. And you are humble enough to realize you don't know everything, you can hire the people you need. To advise you and and you so always surround yourself with people who know more than you and you always be a good leader. If you want to be the smartest person in the room, you're going to be that boss that people talk about behind their back because, you know, you don't. You don't know what you're doing. You know, you've got to rely on your people and empower the people. And so I think, I think it's great and and I agree. There was another speaker said we don't all need to go to college and I think that's true. I mean, we need tradespeople too. Um, but there was no education in the world that would have prepared me for this job. I can tell you, there are just so many different things. And, you know, it's helped, it's helped me understand statutes better, the rules when I have to read them. It helps me keep these two out of trouble a little bit. Um, but. But frankly, they don't need me because we hire somebody to to really do that kind of work. And and there was nothing, I did not feel like my law degree or any of my other education helped me at all when it came to this.
It helped me in this position.
It helps him a lot.
Yeah.
It benefits him, yeah. But it doesn't, but it doesn't benefit me. Um. You know, it did not prepare me more for this. What what you need to do is you care and you educate yourself as you go and you surround yourself with people who are smarter than you. That's how you do it.
And if you're talking about a position like this. Is that basically what the question was too?
Or just any general position, whether it be polit- politics or just a.
I'll tell you what, if if. If you, and I'm not college educated, I guess, you know, I'm not, both of these are, but I'm not. Uh, but in a position like this. If you do what's right and you have the right people behind you, the scenes. You'll do, you'll be fine.
Yeah, and we have committees that we appoint people to. And if you appoint. Again, really smart people to these committees to help make decisions that you trust. Then they can make recommendations and you don't have to become an expert on every little thing. Uh, that's, that's something that you have to keep in mind. You can always put groups of people together. And assemble them and let them think of things. For example, we have a park board. And they're over the memorial building and the county park. And they know so much more than we do about all of that, about recreation, about good ideas, maybe make the memorial building more useful. And so they'll get together, they'll come up with the ideas and then they'll come in to us with those ideas.
One last question. See, I remember you now. You know, from the Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you guys were talking earlier about um allocating money in cases of emergencies? How quickly can you allocate those funds to emergency situations?
I guess, yeah.
That's, that's a great question. So we have to give notice, we have to give public notice, but there there are exceptions. We have emergency meetings that we can call. And we can have them as soon as absolutely necessary. So we put out the agenda as soon as we know we're going to meet, just to give as much notice as possible. And then we explain on the record why we're meeting on the emergency basis. And then we. We vote. So we have called emergency meetings, like when the floods happened in the valley and the fire in the gorge. For the purpose of allocating funds, they had a building, um, there was Fire Montgomery one time and they had. They needed some money to knock some walls in so they didn't fall on people. And so we had an emergency meeting to allocate funds toward that. So we we can react pretty quickly. Um, we, it only requires two of us if for any reason, three of us weren't available, but. Uh, we've all three been available for every single one, so.
And I think having a a great county administrator too to help us out. Ruth?
She's the CEO basically of the county. She runs things.
I heard the cats.
We being the cats.
But we couldn't make it without her. I mean, she does an excellent job. She keeps us in line. Um, make sure that we know some things that. We may want to push and she said, well, you can't do that because you can't spend money on that particular project. So.
There are strings attached to every single bit of funding we get from the government.
Anybody else?
Yeah, anybody have a question for the CEO? All right, let's jump in, get in behind you and take a picture.
Yeah.
Would you grab that microphone and we'll move it so it's not, I know, just like the whole thing. Hand it to me so it's not going to picture.
Three, two, one.
Now ceiling.
Ceiling? Oh, I thought you said ceiling. We can hear. I looked up.
One more, three, two, one.
I had to take out one of my.
Thank you.
I know, just a little bit, yeah.
Enjoy your lunch.
It's all right.
That's why they're up there like that. And congratulations, buddy.
Hey, this one, this one is Allison.
That surprised me.
Hold on, John, we're just taking a small break. I apologize.
Wait, 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 we need to earn that meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, that's right.
So I'm going to move we adjourn the regular meeting.
Second. I guess I'll. All right, let's call this uh. Twenty, is it? It's March twenty, twenty twenty-four meeting. The orders and uh. That's the municipality workshop. Chris, we'll go try to get you, try to get you out of here.
I appreciate it. Now, y'all want to introduce yourselves? This is, I'm I'm here for Meadow Bridge today. A little sorry here, y'all. Jimmy K. James. David Kelly, Mayor.
Julian Judy, Council. Patricia Jones, reporter. Thank y'all for coming all the way down.
So, so what what they've got is they they putting and got USDA money to do a community center. We got the drawing on there. And of that community center. They were, they need five hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. They were, um, they were given five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred. Some of that was the USDA. And some of that was the governor had given them a match.
Now, Josie, who was on the phone, Jenny. From Hudson County?
Yes, they um. Run the new churches and the seniors center.
And some of the equipment that's in the, in the center right now. So, so, yeah, they they asked, um, they asked Governor Justice. For the match, they got a hundred and eight, seven hundred and fifty from. Governor Justice to go with the earmark uh that they received at four hundred and thirty-five. Uh, Governor Justice only gave me eighty-one, eighty-one thousand, five hundred. So. What what we've been doing, we've been trying to fit everything that they need into. Five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars essentially. Um. They absolutely need the twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty for the rest of the match that they get the full funding from the other sources. We were talking about a backup emergency generator because currently they have none in the in the center. So if they lose power, their food spoils, they don't have a warming shelter, they don't have a cooling center. So we're thinking if we can get them a backup generator, then if the power would go out, which it goes out fairly often on that side. They could at least keep their food uh fresh and be able to. Owls or keep some of the seniors comfortable during those those times. And then we were talking with them and stuff. It it looks like, you know, the kitchen equipment, the coolers, the walk-in freezers and things like that. If we could up update that stuff, make it a little bit more feasible for them for their operation, it'd be another twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And then there was some additional design cost. Um, mainly trying to relocate that road. You see on that drawing where it says move the road. We're trying to make it to where we could get a really good ADA compliant entrance for the seniors to come in. And if we can get that road slightly relocated, we can get them an ADA. So the total request that that we're asking Meadow Bridge is asking for right now from you guys is a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred. And that would go into the pot and they give them a final project cost of six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Great. We're going to um be making the decisions at a later date, but I want to let you know to Meadow Bridge that. Some of this money that we have left was already set aside for your area, that we had already. Um, we're trying to evenly disperse it throughout the county. The the amount that we were, you know, giving to community centers and stuff like that. So so there's plenty on the table for your community. I wanted to let you know that, that we've. Um, and and this is well within that amount, that much I can say.
And Chris, I want to ask one question. I know you, it's certain, I mean, I've already looked at some of this, yes. So the total, is there any deadline that this money has to be allocated for the grant?
No, we've we've been working with Danielle from USDA. She's wanting us to move on it. She wants us to get something going. We actually tried to go back to the pot and try to get more money for them. And USDA had a meeting with us and told Meadow Bridge that they either spend this money and use this grant or they probably won't get enough.
Right, so as long as it's by June or.
I I think we'd be okay.
Yeah, that's my.
And and honestly, if 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 we have a hard commitment. And honestly, if 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 we have a hard commitment. If you guys say how much you can give to them, then we'll go ahead and start the design process. And that really won't set us back much because we'll we'll be in the actual design portions of it up until that point anyway.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it won't be retracted if if it's not.
No, no, we should be okay.
Chris, I I do have a question. You just have two ADA parking areas.
Right up front. Right now, they've got a couple of them over here. Of course, the paints have wore off on the pavement. You can't see it. They'll be there, but. I don't have, we don't have enough money to put too much more into that right there.
Could you check and see what it would be to maybe put concrete down from. Off the road where a wheelchair could come here and then into the entry?
Oh, yeah.
That way they could have more parking for ADA if needed.
Yeah, a sidewalk.
Or someone else could come in on a sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, we could look at that.
Okay.
We could absolutely look at that.
I think that would serve better than having grass, but you can't get a wheelchair.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I I can't speak for the town, but you know, if if you guys look at it and you see that. See fit to to give a little extra to it, then, you know, there's there's other requests that they'd like to see. In this community center that just wasn't in the budget. So we were looking at trying to add or convert a couple of offices up in the front end of the existing building that could be converted into like a. Uh use for the city hall at times, and they could have their uh town meetings in the uh community building. As opposed to that little place around now. But um, you know. Funding don't go as far as what.
If if you come to us with the, with some quotes, with some figures. We're gonna have a follow-up meeting. There are a couple of municipalities who couldn't make it today, um Golling Bridge Smithers specifically. Um we could set it for that day. So if you could. Address Commissioner Brenman's concern, maybe give us an estimate for that, and then also these. This wish list that you have for that building.
Okay.
Um we could take a look at that. We haven't said it yet. It's probably gonna be in April. My guess is we have several things set for the sixteenth of April already, so I think it'll probably be on the. Twenty-fourth when we have our meeting.
Perfect.
And Chris, this is going to address the insulation in the building and everything else. So it can be used year round?
Yeah, yeah, it's one of the, you see, we're putting a foyer on the front end of it to where, when you open the door, currently, right now, if you open up that door. Every bit your cold air or all the hot air goes out, one side, all the cold air comes in and the seniors freeze to death. So we're gonna have a foyer in there to where that doesn't happen. And the way we're setting up the kitchen, when they're cooking back there, they'll be able to have. First, say the air conditioner on zone it, so they can have the air conditioner running and not have to have a door open, which won't will eliminate that big draft they have.
Which will eliminate some of our power bills because we didn't pay it. About the twelve, thirteen hundred dollars a month.
That's a lot. Well, I want to let you guys know too that um we didn't hear from your PSD when we had our PSD meeting last week, but we. Also had a couple of other PSDs that weren't able to come in. So if they, if you want to get with them and have them reschedule with us, if they have any requests. Um they book twenty-fourth meeting would be a good time to hear those. Some at three today, so if they're coming today, that'd be great, but if not, we can.
She said that she's gonna try.
Danny's is coming today, yeah. But if you want to let your PSD know if they have any requests, they should come in and. We're talking about more reasonable requests than we are major infrastructure expansions. A lot came in for ex- excavators and certain equipment telemetry and things like that.
Yeah, we've been working with mayor on a couple of emergencies. They got one, right? They got a pump station down right now, so we've been trying to help them get. Uh some emergency money to get the the pump up and running and stuff like that. There's a, there's a couple of things that would be. Very beneficial for them that I could think of. Once your power usage on those. If we could get someone in there with do some bolt testing, find out where all that dead power is going to, that would be some. That right now they're paying two, three hundred dollars a month. For a pump station that is not running. Just dead power, just run onto their their system.
Where's it going?
Don't have clue. And they got six pump stations and and the one at the plant runs. But I'm not pointing for hours. They've gone to plant runs more than any other station, and it's the cheapest one that they have to run, and it's only, how much is it a month?
The whole main plant, yeah, it's it's around eight, seven, eight hundred dollars damage.
And then they've got five pump stations that are pushing out about two hundred dollars a month just running pump stations. But there's two or three different sections. You can see there's three renovations been done to it. There's three different control panels up on there. Like they've just added to it or or and and you don't even know what's alive, what's dead. It's it's, it's a mess.
So they probably run it in parallel instead of in series and that's why all the extra.
If y'all can figure that out too, come back, yeah.
Yeah, that that would be a benefit. We've actually approached and and asked for some some money through through the government. Um through Jim Justice's office to help out, but also that we we can figure it out. But yeah, this is basically what you're looking at now is kind of what we feel is like the. Like, that's it. That's no, that's our wish list, but it's a modest wish list that you get, at least get the project going. I appreciate y'all's time, but you know.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Get the warming station to know, you know, because we have a lot of people that are on oxygen.
How long will it take to?
There's no match discussed, man. We're just talking about fully funding whatever we want.
The renovation, we said six months.
Wonderful. Well, maybe even that expansion of the handicap.
But if you look at that, the way we're going. The two walls existing.
Yeah, I know you've got to get out of here too. You ready?
I'm ready.
Come on.
I'm nervous. Yeah, I'm always nervous. You're not nervous. You're not nervous at all.
Uh first of all, thank you for giving me that. I did send a letter in and uh. We've been working a long time, or I've been at it for eight years, and we've gotten most of the love hanging through Montgomery. It's tore down forty houses. Um we've built parks, we've done some things. Uh we're starting to build that back on those properties that we're torn these houses down. So I've got a few things here. Um I'd like to bring your attention. Again, these are not. Small projects, uh most small projects we've done, and and you all helped us do this, do some of this. Um so the first one was uh, we have an EDA trail grant to put a marina in uh. At the Old Tech Marina, if you're familiar with it, uh we'll put fifteen boat slips in there. Uh bathrooms, make that a workable uh project down the river. That trail will go all the way up to Tuvin, including Smithers. We have a an approved EDA grant. Uh in fact, we're getting ready to uh load it out for. Contract. Uh Montgomery has uh. Uh put in match money for that for eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. You all can just pay me at that step of fee. Very appreciated. That is a one point four million dollar grant that we have. Um if that's not the big one, Max was a big one. Um. We have a federal uh, we're waiting on the federal budget as most people are for twenty twenty-three grant that hasn't been approved yet. It is, it is waiting approval for the Senate to approve. It's made it through all hurdles. But that's a point a half million dollar grant, and that's to build a um. Indoor-outdoor event center on Berry Street where we've torn down that tile block. Uh we've done that with FEMA money, we've done. Um various types of funding that we've gotten, but we have one more building to tear down there. And uh the entire Berry Street will be vacant and it'll be ready for the event center. Um that project, as I said, was four and a half million dollars. And the match for that is three hundred thousand dollars. If you can't do that, if you could do any portion of that, it would be very appreciated on the, I know you you got restricted funds, so. Um but that's going to require a match of three hundred thousand. Uh the other one is uh. Removal of the old high school that burnt, then you all helped us tear the, knock the walls down and keep it safe. That project's probably going to cost around six to nine hundred thousand dollars because it's a brownfield now. We're working with um the Brownfield folks and uh. Well, I don't have the property yet, so it's taken me two years and we've just about secured that. It went through its last hurdle. And um so that one is out there. Um I'm hoping to get federal dollars for that to go clean that up.
You talking about the REIT grant? Estate, estate.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think they're gonna. They're not gonna fund all that.
No, they got thirty million dollars in the account right now.
So I'm gonna go after that, but I just want to bring you up to speed on that. We have, as I said, we have one structure left on Berry Street. And it's the old Eagles uh building. It's it's a three-story structure, the last large structure there. Um would like you to consider uh participating in that removal. Uh we estimate the removal of that building would be ninety thousand dollars. Uh which the city can put some money in it. I can look for other other monies for that. Uh. Another program that we have is uh in its infancy, so I probably shouldn't be put on this list yet. But a boat launch under Montgomery Bridge. For river access, we're estimating that's going to cost about eighty thousand dollars. And the last and final uh thing is uh. The provision park at Fourth Parting Street. Which is uh, we put that there for the people that live in the high-rise building. Most of them have uh. Electronic wheelchairs, jasses and that type of stuff, so we were building a park there right down from from that place. Um I I put on my list, I asked for thirty-five thousand dollars, but we've already put fourteen in it, so really only need twenty-two thousand to finish that part. Uh that's that's not a real big ask. But again, um. We've just about gotten all a lot of loving approved. Uh as far as tearing down buildings, I think I've got four more. I'll be done. I'm gonna be tearing down five more uh quickly this spring. Uh and uh. Again, we are a a couple of other things that we're doing is. Applying for a two hundred thousand dollar grant to finish streetlights on Front Street from where they end there to Dallas Center all the way to Montgomery. We're estimating that to be about two hundred thousand, so that would be a forty thousand dollar match. Uh that we've applied for that, we have that, so.
That's lost uh.
What are your priorities?
My priorities is the uh event center. And like I said, if if you can't reach it all, it's three hundred thousand, but. I'll go somewhere if I try to. The gov- and and I have uh the city hall refurb that we we got eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh the governor's office matched that. And we have a water separation plan going on Washington Street. And uh that is one point four million dollar project, and the governor matched that, so I don't, I don't need a match like that. We're putting in a splash park down on the old pool site, and that needs no match. That's a hundred percent. Uh so, and then we have. Second phase of that, excuse me, in the twenty-three uh. But our congressional ask. Uh we have uh, and that will be no match, and that's another million dollars. So hopefully we'll have a real nice splash park down in the old pool we used to be, uh so I don't need any help on that. Um but again, I, you know, it this is big items and uh because we've got a low hanging fruit and I'm I'm. Picked to death about that. But now we're getting into the media of it and uh so. Just help us what you can and if you, you know, uh.
Mary, you you said that property, you told me to change the subject, but you said that property you don't own yet, correct?
What happened, uh commissioner, is we had uh. We came to the county courts to take that property and it's been a process. Um and the judge said, well, did you advertise where this guy lives? Well, he lives in Redwood, California. So they sent us away. We were ready to take possession that day. We uh, now keep in mind, it's been two years we've been sending this guy stuff. Um uh cards and certified mails.
And all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, he is, yeah, artist classical. That's not the name his mommy gave him. He's an, he's an alias, and it's just been a nightmare, but uh. So anyway, the court, the judge said, I want you to go back and advertise in Redwood, California. Uh which cut us off guard and send him up certified letter. Well, lo and behold, somebody signed for that certified letter. So we have to wait thirty days. Uh and if he doesn't reply or show up. Then we can go. What we're gonna do is we've got about uh forty thousand dollars in liens against that property for grass cutting. Uh and a hundred dollar a day fine, and he has to show up to court, so it's all added up to about four hundred or forty thousand dollars. So what we hope to do is the courts will uh let us bite that lien, because nobody else is gonna pay forty thousand dollars. Uh and then once we get the property, then I can go forward and I've got people quarrel. The Brownfields on hold to help us.
Okay.
I don't know they have that kind of money.
Well, I just asked Angela while we was talking, and I thought. If if you own the property before December thirty-first.
Yeah.
You can request either going what what we're doing, or you could probably do it.
Right.
And uh we can apply for it, or you can apply for it.
Okay.
And see if it's approved and get the money that way. I thought you could, I thought we could, but I wasn't sure until I texted Angela.
When this, when this building burned two years ago, I got an estimate on it, uh and it's six hundred thousand, but I said six to nine. And all this building will have to be hauled Virginia.
It wouldn't hurt to apply. I mean, you know, and and whether you do it or we do it, I mean, you know, it's, you know, we're here to help, so anything.
So if you have any questions, and I know I didn't really come through. Pile of mud on your desk, but.
Because I I got the card from you about Christmas time.
Any questions?
Yeah. Does anybody else gotta leave real fast? Anybody else? Okay.
I'll be back. So I'm here actually on behalf of town pass. Um so you guys did give us a hundred and twelve thousand dollars um early on to do our water project, so this is half. Town and half um PSD. Um this is the expenditure schedule. Um so basically, we are at the end of. Getting the forty customers' water that never had water before in the Fourth Creek Town Creek, which actually isn't in the town. Um but we are ninety-two, thirty-three short. Um of after all the invoices and um part of the grant we were able to put. Um radio read meters because our guys used to have to pull the meter and do the digital, so. Um we are also asking the USDA to see if they have any funds. But we're just use use a backup in case they, in a couple of weeks, we'll get an answer, so um. Basically, um that's that's all the town.
That's all you're short is?
Yeah, we, I mean, we'd spend, it was a one point zero two one billion dollar project. We're at the end of it. You guys already gave us a hundred and twelve, so.
Yeah.
We're hoping the USDA is gonna find some extra grant money, but it's federal, so um I talked to my engineer, and he said it wouldn't hurt to ask you guys.
When will you know?
Uh it should be a couple of weeks. I mean, they, we've already given them all of our documents, but that's the immediate need for PAC. Yeah, but we have other needs, but this is a.
Angela, when, i- is this already started or not?
Yeah, this is the end of it. So basically, this will be able to um finish up. Um putting in the meters into people's yards to their radio reads. So we only have one. Water person. He handles three hundred and twenty-one customers, so this is gonna give him the ability to drive. To pick them up instead of having to manually pick up all those meters and read the numbers and all that, so this is just the end of the water project. So this is Fourth Creek Town Creek, which is. So this is Fort Creek Town Creek, which is there close to the turnpike. It's visible.
I'd like to ask the commission if they would put this on the sixteenth, you should say, two weeks.
Should have an answer, yeah.
Two weeks. It's such a
It's.
Minimal amount compared to what everybody's asking.
Yeah, yeah.
That we could put it back on the sixteenth. To make, to make, you have an answer, and I think we should try to make a decision on this.
I'm fine with that.
Can page on?
Yeah.
Angela, I have one more question. Did your, uh, did your engineer try to increase costs because the cost of material went up?
Uh, yeah, so this project, if you know, water projects take a long time. So we actually did the bid prior to COVID. So what happened, and that was part of it, was the hundred and twelve, what happened is when we actually got all of our documents and the easements, COVID hit and then material of plastic went up. So this was part of that, was cost of material. You mentioned that you guys have other projects. And we do, we, um, you know, we are working on, we have like ten flatbeded houses, so I'm gonna include them in the December REIT grant. Um, we do have a gym that, um, unfortunately, when that windstorm came, we're gonna have to get a new roof, but luckily the insurance company has covered it. So, um, after we get that done, we may have some needs as far as just getting that gym. That's our only structural building.
Can you have something in for us, Bobby?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to council. Like I said, this was just something a quick, but I'll, I'll have something in. I'll have council at, get a priority of some funds and some amounts. And then by the sixteenth, that would be, yeah.
And I have one more question.
Sure.
Did the engineer have to change or update any drawings?
Yes, so part of.
So they had to do that.
Yeah, so part of what waters, who we all might know, but when you do funding, there's something called ultimate de-dubs. So stuff like at end of the lines, that may not be enough funding. So fortunately, um, the contractor went ahead and dug the lines. So that's part of the ninety-two hundred floor. He went ahead and dug the lines and got that ultimate de-dub, because we have four people at the very end of the line, which is actually parallel to the turnpike. They were able to get on water. They don't have a house there yet, but the funding agency went ahead and let us put the taps in, so they won't have to pay the tap fees when they do build a house.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, uh. Mal Hope?
Yeah, the commissioners, thank you for having the opportunity to come over. Mal Hope, obviously, you know, you guys have, uh, been, been aware of our need for connecting for the bicycle trail. I think that's our, our number one priority. Uh, and by the, if we would ask by the sixteenth, we'd have time as well. Give, give a little more clear, uh, request on that. Andy's been working on that project for a number of years. Um, and so that would allow us to connect from the city to the summit, the summit to the gorge and the gorge over here. So bringing that connectivity in part. Uh, and also, we, we will be looking for, we, we, we ran award of, um, sidewalk grant to continue our sidewalk. Uh, that match would be seventy-five thousand dollars for that sidewalk grant. Uh, if council could, or commissioner could consider, consider that. Uh, we, again, in the sixteenth, to bring you more information, it's the Department of Transportation grant we've been awarded. Everything's in place for that, so that would be a tremendous help for us, uh, with, with help of that. And then we also have needs for our community center as well, which we've got twenty thousand dollars from the, uh, Beckley Area Foundation to replace some windows, but we were only able to get uh, nine, nine windows for that amount of money, so, uh, we, and, and there is needs there, so, you know, if, if commissioner, you guys would be willing to allow us about sixteen, that probably would be a little better, clearer uh, estimates on, on those three major projects. The seventy-five thousand is the match for the sidewalk project, uh, for sure, and, uh, the, the, the community center, sort of a question as to what that would be. And then we do have information for one, one of the bicycle trail, or, uh, trail. I don't know if Andy wants to speak to that, but, but we're here this morning. Would you go by the sixteenth?
Well, we got three o'clock today too.
Well.
Uh, yeah, we.
Is it the three o'clock, the three o'clock?
Three o'clock's a PSD.
One o'clock, okay, there's so many today. Okay, sorry.
So aside from the trails, the community center and the sidewalk is the, our two primary needs right now. The match for the, the grant for our sidewalk as well as the, uh, as some of the, I think, repairs in the community center.
Do you know what that's going to do for the community center is?
What we, what, what we would need, we would need to finish the windows out, and there's some interior things. This, uh, over the last three years, we've been able to put a roof on the building and put a new heating system in it just from our budget. But for the windows, it's probably gonna be in, which I'd like to follow up with that to get a solid estimate. I would say about thirty thousand dollars somewhere, and that would finish us up in the windows.
Can you have that by the sixteenth? Can you have it by the sixteenth?
Yeah. Sure.
Okay.
All right, but thank you guys. Thank you so much.
Okay. How you doing, the mayor?
Thank you all. This document has changed several times.
Thank you.
For allowing us to come today. I brought power with me because I have done, like, Alison suggests and surrounded myself with smarter people. So. Um, the, our priority to ask for funds is for our comprehensive plan. Ours was due in twenty-two. Um, we had a lot of things going on that year with Bill retiring and me taking over, so we missed that, that ten years, so we're kind of on a um, an urgent need to get our comprehensive plan. We have, we want to do something a little more robust than what we've had in the past that has just dealt strictly with zoning. We wanna look at, our planning commission wants to try to go and look at all the zoning in the area. Uh, we have a lot of things that are crazy zone, so we wanna work on that and have the help from the people during the comprehensive plans so that, um, we can just have a better plan for our zoning, for the things that are happening in the city. Along with that, we have a lot of, um, different moving parks in the city now. We have Needles Hot Park, so we're, you know, we're doing a lot of, we have a park director, wrecking park director, so he's done a lot of things with all the parks. Um, we have to, just things going on everywhere. We wanna kind of try to bring this together with a strategic plan and an implementation plan, so we got it, we have a quote for the comprehensive plan. We don't for the other plan yet, so we just kind of guessed that total, that would come in about a hundred fifty thousand for both plans. Um, on Roberts Avenue, the next thing is we need drainage and sewer replaced on Roberts Avenue. The problem with the drainage there is causing problems with our road, with that street. It needs paved, but there's no need to repave that street if we can't fix that water problem that's in there, so. And the sewer line needs replaced also, so we'd like to do that at the same time. We can, I don't know if there's restrictions on these funds, but we have our own labor that can do that. Um, so sixty, we could get it for sixty-five thousand. If we have to have engineering and um, bid and do all that, then it would be more. So I don't know how, how these funds have to be used. If anyone knows, I'm gonna do, Ruth, it's a um, I think we can just allocate the money to you and then you can.
And then we can, okay, that's kind of ours. Okay, yeah, that would be good.
That's how we've done it so far.
Okay.
And then we.
Excuse me, you're talking about ARCA, right? That we have to have invoices.
Yeah, we, we just have to have proof that you spent that we.
I just wanna make it fair, because some people have not gave us invoices and it's, we don't wanna get in any trouble.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I've gone through a lot of it now, so I'm probably.
I have to keep her in, thanks, Stacey, when it comes.
And, uh, the last thing we have is some equipment. We have listed for our public works department, um, some zero turnmowers for for all the, we have a lot of grats that we cut and the zero turns, we go through those pretty quick. And a heavy-duty truck lift for our garage. But also our sanitary board needs an excavator that we didn't put on here because you all have given us a support letter for the C D S funds, uh, but they really, they need that more than the public works needs, what they're asking for, so I thought I'd just throw it back in there. Even though, because even if we would get the C D S money, that does, we could probably still use another excavator by the time we would get the C D S money, so. And so the total of those projects without the excavators, two hundred ninety-one thousand.
You got it, it's about, they have sixty-eight.
That's what I would say.
It's about average.
Okay, and are these in power we ordered? Yes.
Good, thank you.
And so the excavator would come in at three and then the public works would be at four. Before we extend it. Oh, just the.
Who's that, Greg, where?
Yeah, it's, um, sixty-eight thousand. So would it be your third priority then? It's, and then the public work? Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry, I'm a saint. Sorry, so. Just, I'm just trying to get my notes straight. Yes, that's what it would be. And then I'm I'm not gonna, I'm not asking for this because, but I wanted to bring you up to date. On the Virginia Street sidewalks, we are just in that planning phase, so we have to apply for a construction grant, which they told us that we would get. I mean, they're pretty sure that we'll get it because of how long we've been working on those sidewalks. Um, so that match will be about two hundred thousand, but we don't know when we're gonna get the grant, so I don't know. Oh, I wouldn't even know when to ask for any help with that, but anyway, I just wanted to bring it up. It's, you know, we're, we're just now having our thirty percent completion meeting and getting all the design together, so. But I, and I appreciate the letter too. I think that's ready. I think Alison maybe has that ready for you all at the same, so. I appreciate that letter. Hopefully it'll get something out.
It's definitely needed for down there.
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are bad. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes, Anstett.
Mr. Wilson for Anstett.
Yeah. That's okay.
That's okay.
Wow, I like this. I'm Robert Wilson. I'm the recorder for the town of Anstett. And I'm here representing our request. Uh, the mayor has put these items together, but he went out of town this morning. We have a sidewalk funding issue. We have received Department of Highway grants on Ridge Creek Sidewalk and Page Street Sidewalk. And our part of those sidewalks, the Ridge Creek is eighty-six thousand seven forty-five. The Page Street is ninety-nine one twelve. There are pictures of the sidewalks. The sidewalks were put in by the W P A. I played on them as a child. I'm sixty-nine years old. Uh, they are in dire need of repair. And then we found after remodeling our town hall, uh, the old Anstett Bank Building. We added offices upstairs and with the snow and the ice this winter, we found several leaks and we have a quote for twenty-four thousand two eighteen. And then we have a street issue at Henry Loving, which is in the middle of Lover's Lee. Uh, we need to do stormwater repair and paving, thirty thousand seven twenty-five. And on Borlorn Street, we have a stormwater drop inlet that we have a need of two grand. So priority projects for municipal funding, about two hundred and forty-two, eight oh one sixty.
Who put these together? You did?
Uh, Mr. Pridemore.
Did you tell it?
Yes, sir.
It's time to do it.
And then we do have some trail issues, but I think that's at one o'clock. And the sidewalks would be brought down to street level, forty-eight inches wide and six inch wide. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with Anstett, but those two streets make a horseshoe and then you go on up the hill. So those people that walk uh, try to utilize these, but they end up on the street.
He did say both these projects want to be done in this year and want to be done next year. They could be separated, I think, if we talk, if we talk a little bit, I don't know whether they, they don't have to be done at one time, don't have to be allocated at one time. Is that correct?
I believe so. I would defer to the mayor to be absolutely sure, but I understand we have both the D O H grants in place.
No, I have employees. No, picture's worth a thousand.
I'm telling you what, I, I, I think this, this stuff I like to see.
See you back.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess it's, is that him?
The workshop, for that workshop?
Yeah, I thought, thought that workshop, you don't want a germ, then get some lunch, connect one.
Yeah, listen to a germ.
All right.